Welcome everyone to Township Council Meeting, March 25th, 2019. Welcome Daisy Girl Scouts. If you'd be so kind to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, can you please read the public notice statement?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10-4-8 and NJSA 10-4-10 as follows. Notice that the meeting was primarily posted on the bulletin board at Andersonville located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 2nd, 2019. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the office of the attached clerk on second date.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Cordean.
Present.
Councilwoman Quadi.
Present.
Councilwoman Vencery.
Present.
Council President Svol.
Have a motion, second to approve the minutes.
Seven.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? I think I have one concerning the minutes of March 11th. If I recall, what I said was we would like to reduce the capital debt and the wording's in the minutes is we will reduce the debt. Okay? So noted. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Mrs. Kraus, can you call the roll?
Councilwoman Cordean.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quadi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vencery.
Yes.
Councilwoman Svol.
Yes. Councilwoman Svol.
Thank you. So we had our monthly meeting for the municipal alliance this past week and happy to report that I previously reported on the drug identification display board. We have had that order and we're hoping to have it available for the national layout, which is in August. We also have the program Staying on the Right Track, which is going to be held in the school, for the school year ends. And the alliance will support this program within school number one. We're also looking to participate by helping to fund the operation graduation for PB High School. The Little Falls Alliance is in the process of reaching out to the high schools to see how we can promote the high school students the importance of not using drugs and alcohol while driving. We're also preparing for the end of fiscal year, which is June. So as a reminder, the grant that runs for municipal alliance runs on school calendar. So we are preparing to finish up this year in our budget. We have Steve May, our coordinator, and Pam Tataro. They will both be attending the municipal alliance training for interpreting this Tuesday, which is going to be sponsored by the State County Alliance. And then also in addition, we have the 94th Memorial Day Parade, which is going to be kicking off Memorial Day weekend. The municipal alliance will also be having a table there where we can hand out some literature about our program. Also, other than municipal alliance, we also had a library board meeting a few weeks ago. And we are also continuing to work on our budget. And one of the things that we have heard from the community is parking that is designated specifically for patrons of the library. That area does get very crowded specifically around school time. So it can be a bit disruptive for people who are attending, say mommy and me classes on 11 o'clock on a Tuesday morning. So we're looking to provide class ordinance to dictate some parking laws specifically for patrons of the library. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Svol, for that fine, detailed report. Currently, the library does have three spots, I think, for the staff. Is that not correct?
We have three spots for the staff. We're looking to hopefully add some spots for the patrons.
Thank you. Councilwoman Quadi.
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Cordean organized it, but I just want to mention the Girl Scouts being here was quite delightful. And it was especially exciting to see them, why do you hear their voices heard when we did the Pledge of Allegiance. So kudos to them for bringing them down to this city of the government. And kudos to you, Councilwoman, for making that happen. I just want to mention the Green Fair, Little Falls Green Fair, that is happening on March 30th. That's this Saturday from noon to four. It's going to be an exciting event. We've actually even expanded our roster of vendors to include some, an organization that heard about us recently and called us up and asked if they could join. And so we're going to be bringing some environmentally friendly products down for people to see what's available. But the library's going to be there, CL Power, Schumacher Shop, Rite, the ABC, the Master Gardeners of State County, the list is too long to mention everybody, but I'm hoping that we get a great turnout. It is from noon to four at the Civic Center this Saturday. And we're very much looking forward to what hopes to be an exciting event. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Quadi. Councilman Vencery.
First, I'll say two thanks to the Daisies for stopping by today for a little tour of the Councilwoman Cordean. I think one thing we learned is you have a microphone in the cab. The kids love you. So it was a good time. Just a couple of things on my end is last Tuesday, the Transportation Committee, we had our second meeting of the year. We discussed a number of different items. One is that Corporal Moncado has worked extensively to pull together a list of signage needs as well as signage replacements in town. So we're working through getting that list finalized. My plan is to sit down with BBW Director Simone, Council President Svol, the mayor, Chief Post, and some of the officers, just to go through what needs need to be here sooner rather than later, and how we can sort of map out a plan to replace signs that are starting to fade as well as put up signs that are missing. The other thing, too, that we were talking about is April is distracted driver awareness month. And one of the things that the committee had suggested was obviously to continue raising awareness, sending out the blast emails and links to certain resources. But what we were thinking of also doing is working with some of the organizations, like AAA, for example, or the National Safety Council, as well as our Little Falls Police Department, to maybe have a seminar, or we can have it here at the Civic Center, just to give residents different tips when it comes to driving, safety, and everything else. Goes beyond distracted driving, of course, understanding when to stop for pedestrians and crosswalks as well. So we'll work through that with Corporal Moncado, as well as Lieutenant Braysden, Chief Post. And then for April, I may even put some slides together for presentation, just to kind of overview of some of the needs for April. Now, in terms of some upcoming events, the Memorial Day Parade that takes place on Saturday, May 25th, we're actually having our first meeting next Tuesday, as the county gets together to start planning the actual event. Most of our committee members are planning to be there, and we're looking forward to this year's event, and hopefully the weather will be good as well. The night before, as you heard earlier from Councilwoman Svol, we are holding our first ever Memorial Day Weekend concert. And I'm pleased to say that we have three different performers scheduled to play. And we also have a number of different food trucks that will be there, including ice cream, where you can dinner for those of you that are working late and eat their own food versus ice cream. We're also looking to just kind of build up the community in terms of tables for information. I've already spoken to the police department, as well as the fire department. They're going to have a table set up for information, as will, of course, municipal alliance. And I'll probably put out an email, see if there's others that would like to do the same thing. This is a nice way where we're bringing everybody in town together. Why not just try to invite all the organizations we can, and bring them together. One other item, Council Presidents, that I wanted to talk about, and the rest of the council is, and I've seen it recently in some other towns, including our neighbors in Woodland Park, as well as Wayne and Franklin Lakes. I know last year, Mr. Sumon had talked about some complaints that he had with PB Today, and how the papers were just building up on people's sidewalks, or driveways, on streets, and a couple of poles came through and the driver was eventually let go. But what we're seeing again is a number of the PB Today newspapers all over the place, as well as other unsolicited materials. I'm wondering if we can explore the possibility of pulling together an ordinance that where we could look at any unsubscribed types of drop-offs, if we can remove that from happening. Because I know if you get, say, some tranches in your times, that'll still be delivered. But the fact that there's always an excess of newspapers in and around this town, if we can look into potentially addressing that. Because other towns have taken notice, too, to kind of curb the amount of waste that builds up against your suburbs. I know also, as well, some issues for some of the plows and some of the cleaning apparatuses. So that's something that we can work to revisit those things that happened recently.
Does the council share that same sentiment that Councilman Vencery has brought forth with the, is it the Today Paper you said?
Yeah, it's like the PB Today, it's other circulars that are just excess when getting rid of mail.
Are there any thoughts on that?
Yes.
Councilwoman Svol.
Thank you. I definitely agree with Councilwoman Vencery. After the snow actually melted a few weeks ago, I found a few of them kind of smooshed along my driveways with my plow, so pushed it up. So also, just going around town, walking, I've noticed that there are several houses that have multiple papers. So not to just showcase the one paper, I just think that it should be inclusive of all literature that has not been subscribed to.
Right.
That is thrown in driveways and along the roadway.
Are there any council members who should weigh in on this dialogue? Councilwoman Cordean.
Yeah, I totally agree. And another issue that raises, if you happen to be away on vacation, and you know, you can stop your mail from coming, but you'll get this pileup of unsubscribed newspapers and circulars, that's like, you know, shows that nobody's got a house. And I think that that's another reason not to get these unsolicited papers. And the fact that they also, you don't realize it, and your car, your truck goes over it where it's raining, and then it gets grounded into either if you have gravel or your paper. It is definitely a nuisance in Southern high school.
Councilman Quadi, do you want anything to say?
I want to echo what Councilwoman Cordean was mentioning, the safety issue of it. It's not only for people that are on vacation, but it also is an indicator that there may be a vulnerable senior, or another vulnerable person, who can't go out and clean their driveway up on a weekly basis. And so you're leaving indicators for people to say, you know, you can drive through the town on a Friday afternoon now, and say, well, that paper's been sitting there for more than 24 hours. Either nobody's home, or the person who is home, it might be a vulnerable person. So I think that, you know, the thing here is something that used to be mailed to us, for those of us that have been in the area a long time, it used to be mailed to us, and it used to be an active part of the community, and it's not anymore. And the reason why they're still continuing to distribute those papers where they do is because it keeps their ad revenue up, it keeps their circulation up. And I don't think that their circulation should be something that becomes detrimental to our community.
Mayor, on behalf of the council, will your office look into the possibility of drafting an ordinance with unsolicited, I would like to say, literature or newspapers, and seeing if it's with the guidance of council?
I think so long as council clears any first amendment violations of free speech, that we can sort of get into it to the extent that's possible.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cordean.
Yes, thank you. Well, I just want to say I thoroughly enjoyed having the Daisy troop here. They were really great and enthusiastic, as I'm sure everybody heard. And that's that would be one of my most favorite Pledge of Allegiances. Everybody should be as exuberant and tense they were when doing the Pledge of Allegiance. And one thing I wanted to add, so when they came, it was all about learning about the history of Town Hall, and how government happens here. And so they had a tour around our lovely Town Hall, and we were going through the different pictures that the Historical Society have put together. And this is, what you see throughout our Town Hall is only a fraction of what the Historical Society has, of phenomenal pictures of yesteryear and our history in Little Falls. And you had to see, they were like, oh wow, oh my God, there's PB. And then we pointed out, you know, the old school one, or an old bridge. It's a reminder, in my segue of reminding people that we have a really terrific Historical Society, and they are ongoing, looking and doing a membership drive, and they really are the preservers of our history. So I just wanted to point that out, and we don't often give them enough credit. On April 10, the Senior Advisory Committee is going to be having a performance by MSU Theater Arts Students. I believe they do this every year, and the seniors really love it. You know, MSU has a really great theater arts department, and so they come and spend a couple of hours with the seniors and perform. So that's on April 10. And I'm surprised that Councilwoman Vencery didn't remind everybody about the Easter egg hunt. Okay, I'll be watching. Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 20th, which whether you have kids or not, or grandkids, you should really come, because it is great fun. The kids get so excited. There's also some of our local businesses there with different handouts. There's like an obstacle course. It's really a great, a great day. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cordean. Approximately two weeks ago, I met with Mr. Krujia and Mr. James D. Maria, as the council knows, and the mayor, to update our shed and pool ordinance. Hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have something for the council to review, and, I'm sorry, for the mayor to review and then bring forth to the council. It does seem that our community had a lot of questions, and the building, our department had some issues with the amount of sheds and the setbacks. We also had a meeting with Mr. Krujia and Mr. James D. Maria concerning the sign ordinance that has been unfortunately or fortunately going on for about a year, year and a half now. Hopefully, that will come to culmination soon. We're getting very close to being able to present something to council and the mayor. Mayor James Belford D'Amiano.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm very excited to announce, as I have in the past with the days coming here, that tomorrow I will be holding my first ever Town Hall Civic Center setting here. As I've indicated in the past, it's going to be a far more informal setting than is here, where I invite people to come ask questions, enter into some dialogue and discussion, get some updates about what's happening in town, what, you know, concerns they may have they express to me. It's something that, although this will be the first one, I'm looking to start doing semi-annually or quarterly, depending upon the interest that it has, and the number of people that show, or the questions that are asked. It's something that I want to do to enter into greater dialogue with everybody here in town. So I encourage everyone to join us at the Civic Center at 7:00 p.m. tomorrow, to just have a little Q and A, or Town Hall style, meeting with myself and everybody in town. So that will be in progress tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. at the Civic Center, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Lenzel, do you have anything for this governing body tonight?
Nothing.
Thank you. Have a motion, second to open the meeting to public for agenda items only.
Sure.
Second. All those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus.
Anyone wishing to address the township council, and you said we're the council president, please give any minute of rest for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes, however appropriate, you may be ready for additional time, and it's all discretion of the council president.
The floor is open.
Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street.
Good evening. Thank you for helping Mrs. Kraus with the table.
No problem, Mr. Council President. As I expressed, last meeting, at the last meeting, I had mixed feelings about ordinances 1345 and 1346. This is regarding the new development that is scheduled to be built down the road. And so if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you a few favors, a few questions, and hopefully by the end of the day, I will have a much clearer mind. Anyone can answer, the mayor, anyone, whoever knows the answer the best. If I remember correctly, there are going to be 102 townhomes and 185 apartments. Is that correct so far?
That's correct.
All right. So the developer is asking for a tax break, basically, a tax abatement. My question is this, and he intends to buy to sell 102, the townhomes.
Townhomes.
Okay. What happens after the developer gets the tax break? Say, Citizen Fernandez comes in and wants to buy a townhome. Do I get a break as well as far as the taxes?
Yeah.
Or just the developer gets it?
Okay. It's a good question, but council, will you please answer it?
The, with the townhomes, because they're for sale, that the pilot gets extended to the owners who purchase, so that tax situation continues for the time that they have.
For the 30 years.
Right. So if, when the townhome is sold, okay, that's when the abatement begins.
Okay.
Okay? There's a certificate of occupancy, because that's the first person that owns it.
All right.
And then that would, and then once that person, if that person sells, then the next person in line receives the benefit.
Okay.
Does that clear up your question, Reverend?
Yes, yes. But that's the part that I'm not too clear with. And I say that-
Well, let's make you clear. You can ask it again.
No, 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 I'm going to follow up. And that's because every other citizen in town has to pay 100% of the tax bill. This supposedly, Mr. Fernandez, the one that is buying the townhouse, is going to be paying an X amount of the tax bill. What does that mean? And I'm sure you all heard the phrase, "You get what you pay for." Am I right? Have you heard that phrase before?
I've heard that phrase before. Yes.
So is that mean that if Citizen Fernandez, that lives in a townhouse and gets a tax break, if he needs, let's say, an ambulance, and calls the dispatch, the dispatcher says, "We can send you the ambulance, but we can sell you Mr. Jack's whiskey with a wheelbarrow," because you're not getting 100% of, we can send you a, an ambulance, because the ambulance is being, is being used for a taxpayer that pays 100% of the tax bill. Or if there's a robbery or whatever, we can't send you the chief, but we can send you the dog.
Okay.
Why should they get the same benefits that the taxpayer gets by paying 100% of the tax bill? That was-
Well, can we address this? Because I think you may have other questions. So your question to the governing body is, why is this builder getting a tax break, getting the same, getting the same services that you and I pay, would I use the word, a full-fledged tax?
I didn't say the builder, I said the owner of the new place.
Okay. The owner, the new owner of a townhome, why should they get a tax break when you pay the full-fledged?
I understand the builder, as you give him an incentive to build a place. But once it's built, it's going to be privately owned like everybody, every other house in town. So why should he get a tax break when you don't get a tax break, I don't get a tax break, why should he get it? That was what it was.
Okay. So let's address that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because if you have other questions, we don't want to lose the conversation.
Yes, sure.
So you know in certain communities, like down the shore, or down south, if you're 55 and over, they have communities where you just pay a certain amount, and you don't pay no monies-
They freeze it.
They freeze it, correct, to the, to the schools, because there's no kids, so they have the ability to do that to attract people. In a city not too far from us, there was a condo development that the taxes were frozen because that particular city wanted people to come to their city, and if they didn't feel they froze the taxes, the people wouldn't come. And then after 30 years, they result back to a normal rate. Those residents get the full-fledged services of the community, just as anyone else. But you're asking why? Why, why, why does that happen? Mayor, would you like to explain to Mr. Fernandez why we do that, or why that was done?
Sure. Because the resident who's a veteran, who receives the veteran deduction on their taxes, is not going to get lesser of the services that the municipality provides. The veteran whose children use our rent program aren't going to get a lesser coach, because they receive a benefit of the taxes. Similarly, the resident who receives the benefit of a pilot and a partial reduction in their taxes is not going to receive a lesser service that the township provides, whether it be police, whether it be ambulance, or any of the others they've indicated. That said, part of the reason why pilots are oftentimes extended to the residents subsequent to a redevelopment, is that in order for the redeveloper to financially afford redevelopment themselves, they need to be able to make additional profit, because there are substantial costs oftentimes in redevelopment for the unmanaged, developing a vacant site. For that reason, again, oftentimes, the theory is that the redeveloper will be able to sell those units, the 102 townhomes, slightly over what might regularly be a fair market value for them, in the event a pilot was not offered to them. Reason being, as I indicated last meeting, if somebody said, you can pay $500,000 for a unit and pay, I'm making these numbers up now, you can pay $10,000 in your taxes, or say you can pay $550,000 for a unit, but you're going to pay $20,000 in your taxes. Oftentimes, people would pay a little bit more for that unit in order to, which would allow the developer to recuperate some of the funds that they've invested. While then, again, the owner is taking on some of that responsibility for the increased value, they're now paying a higher than possible fair market value for that unit, and what otherwise might be assessed to that same unit, thereby, again, receiving, it's a mutual benefit to everyone, is the answer.
To everyone that lives in that community, not to the rest of the taxpayers?
Sure.
No, it's not.
Well, we'll explain to Mr. Fernandez why it is, because, Mayor, you need to talk about the other-
Okay. The other, the other question is-
You don't want to hear that answer, why it is?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Krujia.
We raise, we raise about a little over $13 million a year in taxes, right, for local municipal purpose. If you and I are the only taxpayers, you pay six and a half million, I basically, if we entice someone to develop another piece of property that is otherwise not developable, and they represent two other taxpayers, your taxes go to $3 million, my taxes go to $3 million, their taxes go to $3 million. It's a benefit to you because-
After 30 years?
There's a, there's a benefit during the 30-year period, it's not 100%, but it's a benefit. You can't deny that.
I'm not saying it's not a benefit, but it's after 30 years.
No, no, no. The benefit starts when they start to pay taxes, because this is about-
But they're not paying fully, the amount fully?
Yeah. At 30 years, you get the same-
After 30 years.
But there is a benefit on your one, when they start to pay taxes. You can't, you can't deny the facts.
I'm not denying the facts, but I'm saying if we are all part of the community, we should all be taxed the same amount.
But you missed the part, I must have went too fast on that. If otherwise, that party, that property would not be developable, you would still be paying six and a half million, and I would still be paying six and a half million. So in order to get the benefit, yes, it's not 100% on the first day, but the apportionment takes, takes effect on the first day that they pay taxes. You pay us, they pay a portion, and I pay a portion. That's how it works.
I know how it works, but I don't think it's fair that the rest of the taxpayers, that we are not going to be living in that community, are going to be paying fully tax, 100% tax.
But in, but in my example, your six and a half million would be down. It might have not gone down 3 million, but maybe it went down 2.0.
Like you said, maybe I went too fast for you. You don't want to-
No, I understand. You have to look at the apportionment.
And I'm looking at the whole picture, and I understand that we, the township is going to collect more taxes, the township. But I'm going to still be paying 100% of the amount that I have to pay, while somebody else is paying- of the amount that I have to pay, while somebody else is paying maybe seventy percent of the amount that he has to pay. Am I correct?
Yes, but.
Thank you. That's all, that's all I needed to say.
It's not just simply, yes. It, yes, but.
But after thirty years, they will be paying a hundred percent.
The increase in the taxes, which is occurring on a ongoing basis, is, is paid for by the new developed property.
Okay. I just.
Your next question. Professor Fernandez, your next.
Then, then they're gonna keep a hundred and eighty-five apartments for, they're gonna rent it and things like that. Alright. Supposedly, and they also get a thirty-year break. Supposedly, they sell the property after five years, because they say, you know, "I've had enough." You're Council President, I can't put up with them. So I'm gonna sell the property. Here comes a new investor, that all he's gonna come is with money and buy the property. Obviously, if, if he's gonna buy the property, it's because he thinks that he's gonna be making money. Why should he get the tax break?
Because if, that's a deal that struck, and it goes for the duration of the deal of thirty years, sir.
Okay. So, in other words, the township is giving a tax break to this developer for thirty years, and the residents will still be paying full amount when, the full amount of taxes. And I know the land is, is gonna be developed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as I went through last meeting, that property is estimated to generate, I'll be very open, one and a half million dollars more per year than it, one point three million dollars more per year than it currently generates.
So let's spread it around, Mr. Mayor.
And it is absolutely going to be spread around, in that.
I just don't see it.
The rest of us, myself included, yourself included, every resident in Little Falls, needs to have their pocket generate that much less in order to make the budget work. So that benefit is spread around.
But you know how I feel when, when, let's say, my house is taxed, let's say, three hundred thousand dollars, and here is a brand-new townhome that sells for, let's say, half a million dollars, like you said. And it's only being, and I pay my house, you know, let's say, ten thousand dollars, and, which is that, you know, which is assessed, that's the, at three hundred thousand dollars. I pay, let's say, ten, ten grand. In the meantime, his brand-new townhome, half a million dollars, only pays eight. And I say, "Well, yeah, he's paying taxes, he's paying some taxes, but how come I, I pay more than my house, his assets are less?"
There's a very easy way to play this, and I think this is, I think what you're indicating, and I, I've thought about it from that perspective, but I think it's a selfish way for each one of us to currently look at. And here's why. What you need to compare is, that site can either A, continue to operate as it does, generating three hundred thousand dollars a year in total, in nine or eight acres, or we can provide a benefit to whether it be the developer, the homeowner, to whoever it may, whoever it may be, and that site can generate one point six million dollars per year, which will, again, assist and plus seven the expenses that the municipality has. So we are now actually talking about what is better, option A or option B, and we are certainly relaying a benefit of the pilot to the developer and the homeowners. But it's the lesser of the evils. Is the current condition and use of that property better for you and I? I will tell you right now, that that property, as is, is not going to generate a heck of a lot more taxes next year than it did this year, if nothing were to happen to that property. What I can tell you is that based upon the figures that we are estimating, that property will generate, again, one point three million dollars more under the redeveloped, once it's redeveloped, than it currently does. So again, yes, there is a benefit being relayed to the developer and individual owners. The question is, is that property now better than the benefit we would receive?
Mr. Fernandez, your next question.
The next question is, and I hope nobody gets offended, by, by my next question is this, is the Tamianno Group in any way involved? Will they have the right to sell exclusive, brokerage exclusive, to sell the townhomes or whatever?
The, the builder is, from what we know, gonna be selling the townhomes himself? Is that your question?
There is not gonna be any EMLs, any brokers involved?
From what we know, but that builder could make a deal with a broker if they want.
Well, that's another question. The answer's now.
Okay.
I'm sure they have a loan listing agents.
The floor is open?
Ramon Kistrzewski, one seven Denaro Drive.
Good evening.
Two things. One thing on the ordinance that you're talking about, developing the unsolicited mail. My thought on that is, why not make the ordinance that the unsolicited stuff has to be mailed, instead of just thrown out on the, in the driveway, which would eliminate, you know, piling up, because now it has to be mailed. I don't know if, you know, legally, you can do that. That'd be one way to, to curb it, that it has to be mailed, can't be just, you know, thrown on the curb. And the other thing is ordinance thirteen forty-five and forty-six. According to the copy, they seem to be identical. I don't know if there's a goof there, or there's something added to it.
What should you like, I'm not sure, what should you order, what should you order? Right. So because, as Mr. Fernandez indicated before, there's two sections to develop, and there's the townhome section and the rental section.
Oh, okay, so it's separating the two.
It actually has to be two separate projects, that's why you have thirteen forty-four, thirteen forty-five.
Okay. Yeah, as I sort of reading through, and I was like, they look identical, like, okay, did we make a mistake, or? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions on the unsolicited mail, unsolicited newspapers. We'll take a look at your idea. Good evening.
Don Radcliffe, two thirty-nine Long Hill Road. Unfortunately, I've been away for a few weeks, and I wasn't aware of what this was going on. I really can't understand why this pilot has to go for thirty years. I mean, the property isn't that bad. I mean, I, I think there's some developers who would consider it a good project, and I think it has another impact on the town, and that is on all the existing communities, like the Mill, Inwood, the Brownstone Apartments, the Main Union Apartments. It's gonna put pressure on them, because you have new places to go that are going to be, and from what I read, I just read very briefly, but we're talking about ten or twenty percent of what the taxes are for the first fifteen years? Well, I, I think it said twenty percent of appraised.
So the, if I may, the, the townhomes, a hundred and two townhomes that are going to be for sale, they will be ranging, and they will be phased in over time, be seventy-five percent to ninety-five percent of the ratio of the pilot. The rent, the apartment units that the developer needs to retain, will pay, based upon revenues that they generate, ten percent, with an annual increase back over the term of the pilot. So the, again, that's, there is a ten percent of what you did say, but it's nothing to do with the townhomes themselves, it's to do with the gross revenues that the apartment companies generate.
Okay. I still think there's gonna be an impact on existing communities. And it's also, when you use your example of one point three million, is that the first year, or is that ten years down the road?
That is, the first year after everything's done.
After it's done.
Right. My last call, the sales are issued.
Because it is going to create additional expense. It is going, there's gonna be more people in the schools, there's gonna be more police needed, there's gonna be more fire needed. I mean, so it isn't a pure apples-to-apples.
Sure, I can address some of that as well. The municipality has lost a hundred and forty single-family homes in just a short period of time for people to buy out, and additional properties lost by MSU, which was also some of the highway properties. Certainly something that's been taken into consideration. The estimate is that it will be about seventy more kids out of the schools.
How many?
Seven, zero. Based upon the estimates of the most recent Renter Study, which is now the leading study to utilize and determine the number of students in schools. The developer expects less, but we weren't entertaining his notion of the possibility of less, we're looking at what the Renter Study provided. In speaking with our BA and superintendent of our schools, they felt well-rationed kids into the school right now. They feel that class sizes are extremely small, which is an absolutely outstanding thing, and, you know, not to the detriment of students, obviously, but that each class would easily be able to handle a additional child or two without concern. And that, just understanding, that spans also from K through twelve, because of the seventy students, including, let's say, high school, students of high school age. So in that, we're really only talking about really two-thirds of that total number, essentially, of the seventy that are down to the little falls school districts. And I can tell you that, just a number of years ago, when I went through the little falls schools, school three was not even open. Opening school three dramatically reduced class sizes, because it added a number of additional classrooms, and that cost a big one by the time a number of years ago. That said, again, our business administrator, superintendent of schools, have absolutely no concern with the number of students. So it is certainly a consideration.
On TV, you'll be paying more, because you pay based on the student.
Potentially, the number of students that have been lost to BCTI over the period of years, is again, there's the number of students, definitely not measured.
Does the Counsel have any questions or comments regarding Mr. Radcliffe? Thank you, Mr. Radcliffe. Yes, the floor is open for agenda items only, sir.
Joseph Lee Joy, thirty-four Wood Hall Avenue. I, that's the first, I mean, the second time I've been here, a long time ago, so I don't know too much what's going on, but.
I'm sorry, sir.
Can you, can you repeat your name and spell your name?
Joseph Lee Joy. L.I.J.O.I.
Thank you.
Thirty-four Wood Hall.
We need to have that. Thank you.
So, you mean, these people, they pay a five hundred thousand dollars house that they're gonna, they pay less than, than us, okay? For thirty years, it's a lot, a long time. And so you have this law that, you know, I, I understand that, because it's good that you, you know, you can make a money and things like that, but no longer, right now, we don't make money with that. Special, we've gotta have new cops, believe me, that you gotta do. You gotta have teachers, more teachers. So whatever you make, you gotta dis- spend. Now, when you, you pay less money right now than, than us, that, you know, when I, when I was to this town, come in, I paid fifteen hundred dollars a year. Now I pay twenty-six hundred dollars a quarter. That's a lot of money. I don't think I'm making more money, you know, the, the amount of money that I make now, it's, you know. So, and now, the thing is, that I don't like it. What, what we pay the tax for the, the service that you provide us, that's why we pay the tax. Now, if I fix my house, what happened? You raise my tax. Do you give me a better service? I don't think so. You give me the same service. Now, these people, they got a better home than I have, that's worth more, and they pay less. And that's not fair either. You know, so, you know, these things, you know, this tax, they keep on going higher and higher and higher, all, every year. I don't know if you, you ever heard the, the, the things that says, whatever goes up is supposed to come down? What happened to the tax? It never go down, this tax. You know? So these things, we've gotta watch these things. I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't like it, but I mean, I, I understand, and I, when you're talking about a lot of people that are gonna come in over here, because very, you gotta have a many people, I mean, the low income, you know what? See, when I come in over here, you could not park on the street. Now, you go over there around, you know, you couldn't even park anyplace, because a lot of cars, so a lot of people live in them, more than they should, because we don't know how many people that are illegal over here that they come in. So I, I don't know, it's, in a way, it's a good, you needed to, to do things, but, you know, to give it thirty years, it's not too good. Because I, I heard about it, because I don't know too much about it, about the water, the water bills. I pay a hundred dollars a month, and we pay every month, and they had their law, I don't know what the hell happened on this, with the, with the, with that water, at the time, whatever, whenever they did, they made it some kind of arrangement. Now you cannot do nothing, that's what I heard. I don't know why not, because I have some property, and I pay every three months. Now over here, we pay every month, I mean, that's a lot of money for, for, for a house. I, I don't know why we cannot do anything about that. So, you know, I would, I don't know what to tell you, to, to do something about this tax, because it's not too good.
Mr. Lee Joy, did you say you pay a hundred dollars a month for water?
Yeah, a hundred dollars.
Every month?
Yeah. I mean, in a, in a, in average, because sometimes I pay more, and sometimes I pay less. I don't know. I have some property downtown in Paris, so I pay two hundred dollars every, three months. So it's a lot of money we pay.
To address your concerns about this development, again, we, the mayor talked about, the impact on schools is gonna be minimal, as far as, well, no, it's not, we did the studies, and that's the fact. And as far as the schools, they, they welcome a few more students.
Yes.
It's not like they don't want students, because.
When you, you pass this now, you do these things now, then you can't change no more. We know that.
I know, sir, but let me finish.
You're good.
With all due respect.
Sorry.
And you, you mentioned the, the aspect of hiring police. It's, it's a fact that we are hiring police, but even without this development happening, those police would have been hired to fill out the force. The benefits, the financial benefits to the community far outweigh if that, if that property was not developed. Mayor, do you have any other comments?
No.
Only to address the water bill. Little Falls does not run its own water utility. The water bill is an issue at that rate, if you don't take into account the water, you don't get addressed, it's a concern that occurs. They don't have a water utility, we don't operate our own, so that's an issue. Aside from the rates that might have gone up over the rate of.
I call, I call them up there. I call them up, and I tell them, because they charge six dollars, I think, to come over and to read the meter every, every month. Now, there was three months, there was snow at least time about a couple years ago. Why should I pay, then they come in? How, what can I, why I have to pay the six dollars? It's not the six dollars, I mean, I can't pay six dollars, but why I have to pay when you can, you can come in to read the meters? But they do it.
Mr. Lee Joy, why don't you give Mr. Kucia a call tomorrow, and I think we could help you with this water meter reading situation, okay? Does the Counsel have any other comments or questions for Mr. Lee Joy? Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Radcliffe. That's okay.
I have the document here in my hand.
Which is what?
About the tax exemption for the townhouses. And it says, stage one, until the fifteenth anniversary, the annual service charge should be ten percent of the HGR, which is grossed revenues. Now, how does a townhouse have revenues?
The, if you go.
And then, let me go.
That's.
Stage two, from the first day of the fifteenth anniversary until the twenty-first anniversary, the annual service charge shall be equal to the greater of ten percent of HGR, or twenty percent of the amount of the taxes otherwise due on the property.
Sure. So you are certainly looking at the townhouses, correct?
Right.
Okay. If you go down a little further, it says or, and then there's a big portion of an or that is in there, that says whichever is greater, and the greater is going to be the seventy-nine percent of the other ones.
What's that?
Of appropriate taxes. And you're not paying from the, the segment, can't you give a passing number?
As you, as you go, as you go down, you see there's the one, two, because you're reading, reading, Mr. Radcliffe.
One thirty-nine, yeah.
If you go down, there's the final, there's stage four, and then there's the final stage, and then after that, there's a part about the greater amount. I just wanna be sure you got the right copy.
Yes. Well, what is the HGR?
That's your animal gross revenue.
Yeah, but there's no revenues in the townhouses.
No, 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 but that.
You're absolutely correct, and it doesn't apply to it, but the way that means agreements are awarded for more than tax exemptions, that line was always included.
I know, but then, if there's no.
Go ahead, Counsel.
But if there's no HGR, then you go to default to the other, because there's nothing to be more than.
Mr. Radcliffe, Mr. Renzo's gonna approach you for a moment, he just pointed something out.
Uh-oh. Not with a weapon, you're saying.
That was one of my very first questions when I received.
Mr. Radcliffe, keep your hand in your pocket.
Yeah.
Because it is a little, little confusing that way. Okay. This is the part the mayor's talking about. Eighty, ninety, ninety-five percent. Okay?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Just keep going, that's second.
Okay.
Just give him one moment to get back, so we can have him recorded.
I do agree with you on that one.
So, unfortunately, I, I'm, you know, this is what happens when you get lawyers involved. So, when this document has to be prepared, the language you read before has to be included in every long-term financial agreement. The second part that I showed you...
Right.
Is the part that becomes applicable to the townhomes, because they're for sale. And that's the part that the mayor's referencing about the gradation over time, 75 and up. I know it's unusual and a little confusing, but that's how the language is supposed to be under the statute, so...
I got it now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radcliffe. Yes, sir.
Herb Brichta, 83 Center Ave.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Sure, it's B.R.Y.C.H.T.A.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, I'm not a politically active person. These pilots forced me to come out of my shell. I, I think that these tax abatements are wrong financially and morally. Financially, these payments in lieu of taxes provide the town, it's a quick uptick in revenue, and I understand that it's more money than that property is giving us now. I feel that this is the equivalent of a payday loan, that the interest, when it comes due, is gonna be borne by the rest of us regular taxpayers. Specifically, once those contracts are in force, no matter what happens with this town's finances, those contracts remain in force. We have 30 years for our tax situation as regular taxpayers to continue to deteriorate, while the pilot residents are safe with their contracted payment. Should the school funding formula change in a way that's unfavorable to Little Falls Public Schools or PV, pilot folks are safe. We are not. We have to pick up that balance. If the legislation changes and the property tax ceiling is no longer 2% constrained and can go up by 5%, 10%, whatever, the pilot folks are safe with their pilot and their negotiated contract. We are not. We pick up the difference. Bonds, construction, flood expenses, any increase on the spending, we're on the hook, and the pilot folks are not. This sounds like a great deal for the pilot folks, and I can understand why they would pay top dollar for those units. Morally, this puts the interest of a developer and a handful of property owners ahead of the remainder of the, the citizens of this town. As I just described, we, the regular middle-class taxpayers, will pay the difference between the pilot, what the pilot contributes, and what the actual cost is to run this town. And as that cost increases, we will bear the difference and not the pilot folks. So let's look at who's benefiting. Current owners of the property, I have nothing against them making money off of selling their land, I understand that, but their new shore house shouldn't be paid for out of our wallet. Developers, I looked into the first one, Little Falls Redevelopers Urban Renewal LLC, lists only one principal and managing member, Joseph Forgione, founder, founder of JMF Properties in Whippany, New Jersey. This is a very successful development firm. Mr. Forgione is so successful that he was offered a, he was, excuse me, considered for a position in President Trump's cabinet. As the mayor pointed out, the developer and the property owners do stand to make a little money, and that's correct. I think they're actually gonna make a whole lot of money. I think they should be, make their money without taking advantage of the taxpayers in this town. I think approval, I think the approval of this pilot is wealth redistribution in the wrong way. Basically, take money from the middle class later to make the rich, rich now. I think that's morally unjustifiable. Finally, to the point of the planned development, not being economically viable without a pilot. This is not our problem. We're obligated to zone fairly and not pass discriminatory ordinances. This town has done so, and has done so admirably. We've lived up to our end. We do not owe the developer a pilot. It's not our responsibility to make sure that a developer can make money on his project. We're not required to offer a tax abatement. I would suggest courting a developer who can design within funding limitations or otherwise modifying the plan. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I do implore you to represent us and not politically-connected developers. Please don't sell us out, and please have the courage to do the right thing and vote against these pilots. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You can stay at the podium, sir.
Yes.
I appreciate all your comments this evening, except your last comment of saying that we're politically connected to the developer, which we are not by no means, sir. Let me finish.
I did not mean to state that you were.
Right. But you made that comment, so I want to address that. So, um, does the council have any comments or questions regarding where we're set?
Michael.
Councilman Kwadi?
So faced with the choice of a property generating $300,000 a year and deteriorating considerably over the next 30 years, or having to redevelop and bring in $1.6 million in the first year, you would choose the former as opposed to the left?
Yes. Yes, I would, I would recommend that we...
See, now, I would make the case that that would be irresponsible to the taxpayers.
I, I understand that, but I think that's also based on spending money that we don't have. Right now, if...
We're not spending anything. We're taking in $1.63 million more than we...
And is that returned to the other taxpayers, or is that just spent? So I'll get a tax, so my tax bill will go lower, is what you're saying, sir?
So, as, please, as I've indicated during a number of our meetings in the past, one of the primary focuses of utilizing some of those funds is to attempt to start to pay down massive municipal debt to municipal debt. Towns in Little Falls currently have about $25 million of municipal debt. Starting to chip away at that number by utilizing some of these funds certainly going to distribute that benefit to each and every one of us in the past couple of years. Frankly, I have lived in this town my whole life, I have no intention of moving right now, making improvements to my house as you speak, or when I go for this. I say that because I intend on staying here for a long time. What I am doing is certainly with my, and also benefiting me as a homeowner in Little Falls, which in turn benefits every single property owner in town. It's not a direct benefit to me, it's an indirect benefit to every single person that owns property in Little Falls. And by doing that, as Councilman Kwadi indicated, I do think that this is absolutely a benefit to every single property owner in town. If, over the span of those 30 years, we could take a good chunk out of our current municipal debt while continuing to not only provide the same services, but better services, whether that be emergency response, whether that be our rent center, whether that be anything that this town has to offer, I think that continuing to do that while not going into taxpayers' pockets to do that is certainly a benefit. While we may, might have budgetary increases over the course of the pilot, which are not considered as a level of budget debt. It's impossible. Salaries go up, costs of living goes up, it is, but having that opportunity to start chipping away at municipal debt is something that will long-term benefit each and every one of us that has a property that's down.
Understood it. Respectfully disagree, but I understand. Mr. President, I do want to apologize, the, when I said that the developer is politically-connected, I meant in a national sense, not any member of the council, and I...
Thank you for clarification.
Yes.
Thank you for your service to the country.
Thank you, sir.
That's it. The floor is still open? Good evening.
Catherine Brichta.
Can you spell your name, please?
B.R.Y.C.H.T.A.
Thank you.
101 Lincoln Avenue. 30 years is a long time. I'm going to refer to what I have here from Jersey City. Jersey City is currently now faced with increased taxes, and one of the things that was brought up with the Board of Education and the Jersey City Council was that the administration has not been given school funding because of the number of pilots in that community. Now, I'm sure that their intentions were good when they started this, but now they are faced with a major shortfall. Things change over 30 years, and it's a terrifying thing to like, see what's going to be good for 10 years, what's it going to carry us for 30 years.
And your question, one second, Mayor.
My question is, how are we going to fund increases in the school budgets? How are we going to fund increases in environmental disasters? We are going to need, and will always need, to hire people to render services to each other as a community. And all of us should share equally in the community, and not have to divide ourselves based on this. We cannot anticipate from these studies, and I have been around, my family's been here for a long time, we fought for these school class sizes, for the PTA, we fought very, very hard. I remember when I came here, we had three schools, and then we went down to school, down to two, and we started busing. Our school sizes are small now because people fought, and people came together and paid their taxes. There's, cannot say from, based on the Rucker study, that this is going to hold. It's not. Families are what they are. There, we have parents who are taking care of children, grandparents who are taking care of children. We have a lot of things coming in. You cannot say, even in the 55 and older communities, that you're not going to have to share that burden of educating children and protecting our citizens.
You're, I gather you're totally against this pilot program, is what you're telling this governing body.
I think that taking us out for 35 years is going to be...
It's 30 years, 30 years, yeah.
30 years is an undue burden on us as a community. We need to bring the community together, and the people that will buy there need to be a part of that and share equally.
Does the council, finish up, ma'am?
If he had, if a developer needs to sell and come in, and he needs the pilot program, there are other ways of going it. Cliffside Park, we have a developer, DMG, who is paying property taxes to encourage people to buy these condos and to buy these units. He's doing this for three or four years. He's doing it on select properties that he's developing as, as a means to sell these properties. Why are we have, why do we have to turn to a pilot?
Does the council have any questions or comments regarding what has been said by the residents this evening? Mayor, would you like to follow up?
Sure. So, Jersey City and School District are set up extremely different than the township of Little Falls. Jersey City is a high-level school district that, the budget is actually funded by the municipality, they do not have their own separate taxing authority such as Little Falls does, whereby a local school has their own budget and needs to raise their own taxes. So, the funding formula for the schools in Jersey City are very different than that year in town. And I say that because, at the last month or two weeks ago meeting, what I had indicated was that if the schools this year, I'm gonna use again to make round numbers and make a little bit, if the school needed about $12 million to operate and to be their school calendar year, July 1 to June 30 calendar year, and next year, in order to do everything that they wanted, they need $12,100,000. They simply forward the tax bill to the township of Little Falls to raise those taxes for them throughout taxes. So, the district themselves are not harmed in any way by this pilot. In fact, again, if they needed $12 million last year, then they'd be $12.1 or $12.2 next year. We simply raise that as part of the entire share of taxes that the municipality will collect on behalf of the schools, and then simply forward that payment to schools. So the schools in no way will be harmed as they were in Jersey City. And Jersey City is also a different environment. They have dozens and dozens and dozens of pilots that aspire to that same thing. That was certainly unique to what they did, and very different than the other. I mean, this is our first pilot, it's a promotional amount to, to the number that were authorized in Jersey City. That said, again, to address the class size issue that I indicated, your concerns over this, I believe that property values and municipal values are driven by two things, schools and safety, as two of the absolute leading factors for private property values and towns that people strive for them. And as far as the schools go, it's certainly been something that's been on the forefront of my mind since the inception of the discussions of this pilot. And that said, again, as I indicated, the municipality in the past couple of years has lost 140 single-family homes due to fuel violence. Single-family homes are the number-one most likely structure to have a family with more children. And a apartment building or a townhouse type structure, although I'm not saying there will be no kids in the entire development, the number of kids that has likely to produce for our school district is substantially lower than the number of single-family homes that we've lost over the past couple of years. Again, I've talked to our business administrator and superintendent on numerous occasions. And class size of 14 right now, if it gets to 15, there is no more administrative staff, no more teachers that would be necessary to provide the same education as they would give to the students in town now. This is something that they, again, they welcome, they want to change the system, it matters to integrate your numbers, as far as the budget, as far as per people's expenditures. So, it is not something that, again, it's taken late, there was certainly a lot of thought and a lot of consideration that was put into all of this, and I can absolutely appreciate where you're coming from, all of your concerns and your comments, but from the township's financial perspective, which is all of our financial issue when our tax bill comes in, the benefits of this pilot severely and substantially outweigh the detriment associated with that property remaining and is as is state. And in order to benefit the entire town, every single one of us that live here right now, again, we were faced with two options. Leaving that eight acres in permanent state, or providing a benefit to several individuals or a developer or whoever it may be in order to make the project feasible to then benefit all of us. And I can tell you that the developer paid probably three, more than three times more than the assessed value of the properties in that site. And for that reason, the only way to make these projects financially feasible for it is to own the land. And again, at the end of the day, it was a favor we were faced with, what is the best financial, what is the best decision to put the town in the best financial position? And this, in my opinion, was the best way to put the town in the best financial position we voted.
It just seems that this is an awful long way out for all of us to care. I mean, you know, we have been here for generations, some people maybe, you know, we're looking at 30 years. How much of our taxes are going to the school budget when it's decided to do that? How much? Percentage?
So, probably about 50% of the taxes.
About 50%?
That's...
Okay. If there is any changes, who bears it?
So you're just talking about proportion of taxes? The percentages...
Percentages proportions, what is, at the last meeting, I think, did you mention that you were going to have a discussion with the superintendent as far as how the schools are going to be handled with this, with anything that we gain on this?
I've absolutely talked to him, and as I...
You have? Okay. So what are, what are we going to be doing with that?
So one of the, so again, this...
What are you gonna give the school?
In no way is the school financially harmed by us bringing in this pilot. They will continue to receive whatever increases they raise in their taxes by the school board level through the taxes raised by the municipality.
Okay. So that...
So they will in no way, they will not receive less money next year, because that site, you know, 10 years from now hypothetically, they will not be receiving less money because of that site. There is no deduction or reduction to them in their annual budget.
For the schools.
Correct.
That, in a way, is reassuring, but it's not reassuring coming from the taxpayer's side, because we're going to have to pick them up.
But it is, and I'll explain to you why. Because whether the taxes that you pay, whether, I'm gonna use very round numbers, the $309,000 only towns pay roughly $10,000 in taxes, so, so $300,000 and $10,000 in taxes. Of that $10,000, whether 50% is going to the schools and 25% is going to the municipality as it currently is, or theoretically 55% is going to the schools and 20% is going to the municipality, but at the end of the day, the amount of taxes that you're paying to the schools and the town doesn't necess, doesn't change. Doesn't really matter the percentage that's being paid to either the municipality or the town. In no way, that's irrelevant. The only thing that's relevant is the amount of taxes that we're all paying. And in order to, again, keep the future taxes down, utilizing the additional revenues from the site to assist in paying down our debts is the only way to assure our financial security we vote.
I really have a hard time agreeing with you. I, I just feel that we are going to be carrying a much greater burden if we could, I don't see where Little Falls has a problem attracting development.
Well, and I'd be happy to take that with it. Well, and I'd be happy to sit down with the, by the, I'd be happy to sit down and go over numbers and discuss this a lot more outside of this meeting if you'd like to.
I mean, I just see people like, you know, we are maintaining our properties. I mean, there are some issues with properties not being maintained. I'm not sure if it's an enforcement issue or what it is, but people are maintaining their properties. People are building. I mean, we have three new buildings here on Walnut Street. We have a home that is being rebuilt on the corner of Wilmore and Third. Just, just a few places. I mean, we have things that are happening here. Why do we have to entice the developer to come in here with a thirty-year tax agreement like this?
Because again, the municipality makes out better to the two and one point three million dollars per year.
Per year, guaranteed.
Year one.
No, why, why can't it be per year?
It is per year. It is with the interest rate.
One, one, please.
There are step ups throughout, so the number will grow over the thirty years. So I, what I say will be better to the two and one point three million, that number will increase year after year.
Okay, and it's like, you know, and I know that I am, I'm looking at increases in our taxes because of the last flood, you know.
So let's get a clarification to that matter. Okay, I know.
No, I'm-
Certainly, I'll absolutely address that. Those were words that were certainly, I will say, immensely shifted by the author.
Okay.
Because the statement was simply this, that the municipality, after incurring emergency expenses in a calendar budget, a budget year, is required to raise those funds in the following budget. And the statement that I made is this, is that had the flood not occurred, or had FEMA reimbursed us for the cost that the municipality incurred as a result of the flood, there would have been zero tax increase in Little Falls this year. So the statement was simply that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we required to re, to replenish or to raise this calendar year, again, had that not happened, everything that was in the budget could have remained exactly as is in the budget with zero tax increase in the residence. So that was the statement that was made. It turns out that I now point, by way of this article, I pointed my finger at the victims of wanting to blame them for the tax increases, which is absolutely untrue, preposterous. I have not much numbers to, to respond to that.
Okay, because this is one of the considerations I was, you know, going to bring up too, is this like if we should have an unexpected event, can we amend that agreement any time? On the pilot?
No.
We're locked into this, we're locked into it no matter what, except the rest of us.
But not untrue, they, they do share in the tax increases that we will share as assessed values continue to go up. So their number, whatever that number is, they want, so I'll give, again, very round numbers, on the five hundred thousand dollar town, who would normally be paying eighteen thousand dollars a year taxes, they may very well be paying seventy-five percent of the eighteen thousand is fourteen thousand and change. That number will increase over the life, over the life of the pilot. And it will also fluctuate by percentage increasing because it moves from seventy-five percent to ninety-five percent over the life of the pilot and by way of that property value increasing. They will be paying seventy-five percent of what they would have paid as regular home. And again, increasing to ninety-five percent. So they will see increases in the taxes.
Just at a lot slower rate?
About twenty-five percent reduction, but again, they're probably paying more for the unit than they otherwise may have paid.
Where's my case?
Do you have any other questions?
I have a lot of questions.
Go ahead, you're welcome to ask, you're welcome to ask. We're here, we're here for the public.
You're here for the public.
Yes, we are. This is our job.
Sit down with you another time if you'd like, whatever you need.
Yeah, it's, I just feel that, I just feel that we're going to be carrying so much more than we already carry.
Carrying what?
Carrying, you know, our, our part of the community. I mean, you, you're locking a, one, just one portion of our community and we're not sharing this with everybody. I mean, I'm not seeing my property taxes coming down.
But that's the plan. And that's, that's just-
But the thing is, is that we still have to support everything else, but they're not coming down.
But if township can generate one million dollars more, one point three million dollars more than previously did, but it only costs us, I'm making numbers up, two hundred thousand dollars to do that, we're still to the good nexus of a million dollars a year.
Which will be using to pay down the township debt.
That can be utilized to pay down township debt, that sets us in a good place for the future where we are able to sustain a much more stable tax rate, at least locally, against me for accounting, against me for the schools, we are in control of roughly twenty-five percent of your, your taxes. So what I can say is that we are going to attempt to utilize those funds to stabilize the taxes to assist in paying down the useful debt over a period of time.
So if the schools do increase their, their budgets, the people on a pilot program, will they be paying for the schools at their assessed value or according to the pilot value?
True, according to the pilot.
Pilot value, so we're going to pay more. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments this evening.
I think that's how the case-
There's someone before you, Mr. Fernandez, give me one moment. Go ahead, sir.
Jim Doran.
Can you spell your last name, please?
D O R A N.
Thank you.
Twenty-two, Rowan Circle. I have come to be very cynical about any official statement, going back to the late sixties when it was a matter of life and death. I have been listening to all the comments here and I'm astonished at those questioners who cannot understand that better is always going to be flawed, always going to have some aspects of it that are unpleasant. And the fairness aspect, I understand people feel is unpleasant. For my part, I'll be quite happy to take seventy percent of something rather than zero percent of nothing. Am I correct in understanding that this pilot program is a state, is, is a part of state law?
That is correct.
Right under the statute.
And are there, what, were there alternatives? Would, are there shorter pilot programs?
There's, it's up to thirty years.
Ah, okay, so, all right. So that was, that part was the town decision to make it thirty years.
Well, then, that was the request by the developer.
Yeah, okay.
The, just, just for clarification sake, there's, there is a short-term tax exemption law that would not apply to this particular set of circumstances, that's a five or ten year program. All the other, all the other long-term pilots are normally thirty years. And the reason for that is because of various financial projections by developers. And that's why the thirty-year period is off.
Okay. And I, I do sympathize with the mayor and council not being able to predict the future. That status will probably continue indefinitely. Thanks for what you've been doing.
Thank you for your comments. So does the council, Mr. Duran, can you please come back to the podium for a second? Councilwoman Kurnier, you have a comment?
Well, if, if the mayor would help me review something, the mayor staged a loss one hundred and forty houses due to flood remediation. Mayor Tammy Anna, what did we lose in the tax base when Ward's trucking sold families?
Nine hundred thousand dollars.
Nine hundred thousand dollars.
I, I think, I, nine hundred, I guess about five hundred, something like that.
But, so, excuse me one second, that comment came from Mr. Fernandez, but we would have to check it out fully. Okay, I understand about, for the record, that comment's not being given by staff, we would have to check it out. But the comment by Mr. Fernandez, nine hundred thousand, for the record.
It was substantial.
Okay.
It was substantial.
Thank you, sir.
And we lost, I think, six houses to MSU. So to me, we, up until this point, up until mayor and council, looked to bring the developer into an area that was in need of redevelopment because of a lot of reasons, light, environmental issues, how it made the town look, the fact that it was bringing in a total of three hundred thousand dollars worth of taxes, of which the county had seventy-five thousand. DPW still has to be involved there. It has not, it could have its own flooding issues. It, we get complaints from residents because of rate of catering, a whole number of issues. I remember that when I was sitting in the, in the gallery and the council was voting on, on flood remediation, which I understood because my heart went out to those people who lost their homes or couldn't have the value of their homes. I asked the council at that time, that I understood why they were doing that, but what was the plan for the future to help the rest of the residents to take the tax burden? And if you go back in time, after that, our taxes went up in pretty big jumps, am I correct?
Captain, I think the easiest way to explain it, a rhetorical way to explain it, is then there are really two parts to a budget. There's the expenses that you have and there's the revenue that you generate to offset the rest of the money that you need to raise by taxes. And that's really, and there's revenues and there's expenses. Revenues are either brought in by taxes or they're brought in by fees and things of the sort. And the only way to stabilize the taxes that you and I and everyone else in town pays, because I will tell you, expenses in this municipality are cut to bare bones, staffing throughout the municipality is bare bones. There used to be a lot more people in that small building on, over on Stevens Ave than there are in the street building over here. And I say that because everything is cut to a bare bones. Cutting expenses at this point firmly already been cut is near impossible. And I say that because the expenses at this bare bones will continue to increase year after year if the only factor is cost of living. That said, the only way to offset the taxes that you and I will pay to deal with are increased cost of living is to bring in additional revenues. And radibles and redevelopment is sort of the only direction Little Falls because frankly, we are outer space.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
If I may, one more observation. When I first came to Little Falls in nineteen seventy-eight, so I'm new here, the, I was told that Little Falls had no debt in seventy-eight. And maybe it was an exaggeration, but it seems like it, it has built up considerably. And I think that it's very important for future taxpayers and will, to receive a, a benefit of reduced interest payments, especially given that financial future is in principle unpredictable.
Thank you.
We're looking for that, that zero debt figure.
Right.
Sounds good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Absolutely, Mr. Fernandez.
Louis Fernandez, fifty-four, Harson Street. I, I don't think there's anybody in this room that disagrees that we need taxes. It's just a matter of getting them. You said, and I quote you, that the developer paid three times as much for the property. But if he was that stupid, I don't think we should be, we should pick up the bill for him. If he wasn't able to negotiate a deal for the piece of land, why should we pay for his mistake? That's number one. Hold on, hold on.
Mr. Fernandez, so we don't get confused, we're going to take one question at a time. You made the comment, we're going to answer it.
So to answer that first part of the question, I don't think the developers are generally stupid in the way that they acquire property. I'll explain to you why. As somebody who attempts to acquire property and after that first property is void, or maybe even that second property is void, property owners themselves are not stupid in that they begin to see a trend that this developer is attempting to amass a number of properties to put together a much larger site where some greater redevelopment can occur than say, say, seven hundred. And when that occurs, people begin to realize, people begin to realize that the property that may very well be assessed at five hundred thousand dollars, that, and I'll even use kind of along your term, this sucker's going to pay half a lot more for it than he otherwise would have if he was only going to get a single-family home.
Right.
And that trend then continues as they get further and further and further into the site. And again, paying three times fair market value, it's just clear, this particular developer was not stupid in that he was a contract purchaser of these properties. The only time he actually has to close on them and come up with three times the property is after approvals were actually granted to him and the, you know, planning board is actually able to approve the project. So again, these offers and these, all these considerations and this math goes, it's, it's far more than just a couple of numbers being calculated. There's a lot of math and a lot of formula that goes into develop, you know, determining what is positive or what's not, why do you cut your loss because for somebody that's in this one piece of court.
But if he sees that even paying three times as much for a piece of property, for quite a few pieces of property, as he accumulates pieces of land, he still pays three times as much and he still goes for it, it's because he still thinks that he's going to make money. He, he wasn't, he's not going to buy and pay three times as much for a piece of property if he's going to lose money. And the only, and that's the part that irritates me because he's going to make money by getting a tax break. You said bringing radible, bringing radibles to the township, okay, but not at the expenses, not at the expense of the ones that are here already and they're paying full price.
Mr. Duran, explain to me how you do worse when the municipality generates one point three million dollars more when this budget is completed than you do when it does not?
All I'm saying to you is let's pay all the same amount of taxes. We are all being taxed on the houses at a rate, the house, the township has a rate which multiplies times the assessment of the property, correct?
Correct.
Let's, let's all go by the same rate.
Then you do save them at a percent reduction.
Well, then it's not the same rate.
But again, the only way to get those-
I, I understand.
Get the revenues from them was to do this.
I, I understand what you're saying. I understand that one point three million dollars is better than nothing. But we also, you have to understand also that, you know, the ones that are paying full amount don't see the guy that is paying only seventy-five percent of the amount and having a, a, a higher assessed home, they don't say, they don't see it too kind.
The only thing I can recommend is that if that style of townhouse suits you, jump on the opportunity.
And what happened to the offer and demand? I mean, we live in a nation where, you know, it's the offer and the demand. If, if he can't sell it for six hundred thousand dollars, maybe he has to sell it for four hundred thousand dollars.
And he may not make money.
But, but he's a businessman and he bought these thinking that he was going to make money. At the expense, right now, he looks like he's, he thought he was going to make money at the expense of the taxpayers by getting a discount.
You would argue better when the pilot was online versus now. So it's not at our expense, is my only response to that.
You say it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. The floor is still open. Seeing all that's come forward, have a motion, a second to close the public comment? Who made second? Okay, you have that, Ms. Kraus?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. Have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilwoman Kurnier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coloney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeser?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vender?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance one, three, four, five.
Second reading in public hearing, ordinance number one, three, four, five, and ordinance entitled, "Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County Estates gave in New Jersey to authorize and approve the application for tax exemption and financial agreement by and between the Township of Little Falls and Little Falls Redevelopers Urban Revival and Little Seaford Singac Industrial Zone Redevelopment Area."
Have a motion, a, a second to open to the public hearing on ordinance one, three, four, five.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The floor is open if anyone wants to comment on that. Have a motion, and a second to close the public hearing on ordinance 1345.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion, and a second to adopt ordinance 1345.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for 1345.
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1346.
Second reading of public hearing, ordinance number 1346, an ordinance entitled Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic State of New Jersey to authorize and approve the application for tax exemption and financial agreement by and between the Township of Little Falls and Little Falls Town Homes Redevelopers Urban Renewal LLC versus Singac Industrial Zone Redevelopment Area.
Have a motion, and a second to open to the public hearing on ordinance 1346.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion, and a second to close the public hearing on ordinance 1346.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion, and a second to adopt ordinance 1346.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1347.
Second reading of public hearing, ordinance number 1347, an ordinance entitled Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic State of New Jersey amending the Township Code Chapter 126 lettering.
Have a motion, and a second to open to the public hearing on ordinance 1347.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion signify by saying nay. The floor is open for 1347.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Have a motion, and a second to adopt 1347.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1349.
Introduction of ordinance number 1349, an ordinance entitled Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic State of New Jersey amending the Township Code Chapter 143 Parks and Recreation Facility. Second reading of public hearing scheduled for April 22nd, 2019.
Have a motion, and a second to introduce ordinance 1349.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1350.
Introduction of ordinance number 1350, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Sanitary Sewer Improvements at various locations in line for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of 300,000 dollars to pay the costs thereof, to appropriate township infiltration and inflow reserve funds to make down payments, authorize the issuance of bonds, the financing of appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, with a second reading of public hearing scheduled for April 22nd, 2019.
Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance, I'm sorry. Have a motion, and a second to introduce 1350.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1351.
Introduction of ordinance number 1351, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of Pony Road and Brand Street in line for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of 325,000 dollars to pay the costs thereof, to appropriate federal grants to make down payments, authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, with a second reading of public hearing scheduled for April 22nd, 2019.
Have a motion, and a second to introduce ordinance 1351.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1352.
Introduction of ordinance number 1352, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of the 2019 Land Improvement Program in line for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of 675,000 dollars to pay the costs thereof, to make down payments, authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, with a second reading of public hearing scheduled for April 22nd, 2019.
Can I have a motion, and a second to introduce ordinance 1352?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1353.
Introduction of ordinance number 1353, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment, in line for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of payments of 38,000 dollars to pay the costs thereof, to appropriate a state grant to make down payments, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, with a second reading of public hearing scheduled for April 22nd, 2019.
Have a motion, and a second to introduce ordinance 1353.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, read ordinance 1354, please.
Introduction of ordinance number 1354, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Undertaking of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery in line for the Township of Little Falls and the County of Passaic State of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of 300,000 dollars to pay the costs thereof, to appropriate township open speech trust account funds and federal grants to make down payments, authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, with a second reading of public hearing scheduled for April 22nd, 2019.
Have a motion, and a second to introduce ordinance 1354.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Corneille?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancher?
Yes.
Council President Skolov?
Yes. Have a motion, and a second to open for public comment, for general matters only.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The floor is open for general, oh, Mrs. Kraus, please read the public statement.
Anyone wishing to address the township council, may do so with the council president. Please give any address for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes. However appropriate, you may be granted additional time, with sole discretion of the council president.
Thank you. The floor is now open for general matters only. Professor?
Thank you, thank you. Council President. I see that one of the ordinances is smoking has to do with e-tobacco and things like that, which comes into my question. Has the town, I think I asked this question before, has the town taking any stance on the, stance on the marijuana?
Yes.
Issue that was, I think it was voted today, the state, it was voted down, correct?
Mr. Fernandez, the vote was polled from the legislature, so there was no vote on the marijuana.
Okay.